... sale is, we had planned that these two projects would be combined because as we all know borrowing money comes at a cost and if the larger the bond sale, the more efficient that, you know, the costs are. So, we did take bids for the RA Jones project back around October time period and we knew that there would be a little bit of a time gap. We just took bids and you're approving those for the Boone Phase Two project. So, you know, that is why we are pushing this a little bit faster than normal, just because of interest rates rising and we want to make sure we get the best situation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sishil. Any further questions or discussion? Being that there's no discussion, no more discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I need to read that into the record.
She needs to read that resolution into the record, right, or not?
Okay. Okay, okay. The resolution, revenue bonds resolution renovations of RA Jones Middle School with the resolution to be placed in the minutes as recommended. Does that cover it? Thank you. It's only my second meeting, so be patient. Karen, the Karens keep us on track. Okay, we will move to agenda item IX, recommended action new business item C, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action new business item C. The Section 125 Cafeteria Plan and Employee Optional Benefits Plan, vendor Houchens Insurance Group as presented. I will have Mr. Ball, our Human Resources Director, come forward once there's a motion. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the new business item C, the 125 Cafeteria Plan and Employee Optional Benefits Plan, vendor Houchens Insurance Group as recommended? Do I have a motion? Mr. Collins, do I have a second? Dr. Brown? Ready for discussion?
Go ahead there, Mr. Ball.
My apologies, Ms. Pyle. This is my first meeting, so that's one less than you. I'm a little green here. Do want to recognize Ms. Pyle, Ms. Sishil, Mr. Bufano, and Ms. Winsett who are part of the Benefits Committee. They were part of these presentations as well, so do appreciate their time. The reason that we considered and decided to recommend the move to Houchens is, first and foremost, it's going to be a significant savings for our employees who do choose optional benefits. At a cost savings many times forty, close to forty-one percent with actual increases in benefits upwards of twenty percent. So, they're going to be paying less and they're going to be getting a greater benefit from these optional benefits, insurance benefits they choose. Also, and this was, has been a concern presented to us, and I know some of the board members as well, is employees are concerned that on April 1st, they're going to lose benefits altogether if they have cancer policies, if they have disability policies. HIG has guaranteed issue policies, meaning that individuals who are already covered under American Fidelity roll right over with no, no time that they have to have for credit in order to qualify for those plans. So, they don't have to re-qualify for a disability plan. On day one, April 1st, they will be covered by Houchens just like they were by American Fidelity. So, there will be no loss in benefits for those employees. Those employees who do want to keep their American Fidelity benefits will absolutely have that option. They'll be given the contact information for American Fidelity if they want to keep that relationship with American Fidelity. They'll be given the directions on how they can continue that. So, if they want to keep their disability policy with American Fidelity, they can. They'll just have to communicate that to American Fidelity. What HIG Houchens is also providing to us is the one-on-one counseling sessions for each and every employee before the plans take effect April 1st. So, that will give our employees who have plans with American Fidelity and those who don't, the opportunity to sit down one-on-one with a counselor from Houchens and look at their current coverage and look at the coverages that could be provided and would be provided by Houchens. And if they want to obviously move over, Houchens would support them. And if not, then Houchens would provide them again with the information to continue those plans with American Fidelity. And we also did a lot of homework from other districts in the region and across the state who have made the move to Houchens. We really couldn't find anything negative. Every reference that not only they gave us, but that we went looking for, had exemplary comments when it came to cost savings for their employees and when it came to the customer service component, which is very, very important for our employees. Some of them, if they're utilizing these plans, are doing so in kind of a traumatic situation. So, that customer service component was really important to the committee's work as well. And Houchens really did give us all a very good impression of the high level of customer service we will provide. So, those are the components that we believed were most important to our employees. They can continue those coverages. They'll see a cost savings in that high level of customer service is something that I know we will get and we expect from Houchens. So, Ms. Pyle, I don't know if you have anything else to add, or I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, as you mentioned, Mr. Ball, I did serve on that committee and I was very, very impressed with the presentation by the Houchens Group. And I wanted to share a couple of things. We have a couple of local superintendents in the region that they, their school districts recently changed. And there are two superintendents who I respect and admire very much. And one of them said that changing insurance providers is a really big deal and your crew took, this was directed towards Houchens, took a lot of fear away by answering questions, helping with paperwork, and showing a lot of grace and patience to everyone. And another one, a quote, although we realize savings, our teachers receive excellent service, comparable products, and no break in any services. Our district office staff received great information and training to make the transition seamless. Those were very important and just kind of solidified that I believe the committee made the right recommendation.
When you were considering and doing your due diligence with other districts that have moved, what district was the largest in size compared, comparative to our district's size and number of employees?
Yeah, I don't have those exact sizes for you. I can give you some of the counties. Logan County and Pulaski County were a couple of counties that we talked to that gave us references. I don't have the exact sizes of the counties that we talked to, so I apologize. I don't have that answer for you.
Okay. That would be my concern. It's easy to provide exemplary service and those counties may be five to seven thousand students, so maybe a couple thousand employees. I don't know. We've got four thousand something employees, so that's a big difference in providing ongoing great service. And from the staff members who emailed me direct, I've read them all. I haven't had a chance to respond them all because those were coming in when I was at work. So, I was trying to look like I was working and I was replying to emails, so I just told them myself, but honesty is the best policy. And, you know, I understand the specific concerns that were directed to me by email by staff members have been through a lot health-wise. And we've had American Fidelity for many years and I can understand that bond there if you've been through traumatic health issues over multiple years. So, again, it's, I would, was part of their presentation saying how many staff would be dedicated to Boone County? Are they going to have a Boone County service team for our four thousand employees? Because saving money is always great, but the old saying, you get what you pay for. If we're not, and it's easy for someone who is a smaller district with far less employees to service, to get exemplary service. But I just want to make sure, I love saving our staff money. I love that it's comparable coverages and policies and plans, some types of plans that we don't have currently. I think that's all great. But if we're not going to get the same level of service, and how long are we bound? This contract is for how long? I don't have my notes in front of me to know.
So, this would, this would, it would not be a contract right now. We would, we would be talking to them, but it would be an annual. So, they have one year to show us that what they said is what they mean and what they mean is what they say. And if not, then this is a process that we certainly don't expect to do on an annual basis, but absolutely could do so. And Ms. Sishil, I'll give credit to her. They also did give the example of Scott County and they use them pretty heavily. And Scott County would be fairly, fairly equitable, yes.
Mrs. Bird, if I may also, please excuse me, I should have given this context earlier. This process, looking at our employee optional benefits began nearly a year ago with some conversations with our previous Human Resources Director. I personally had some conversations with leadership within the Houchens Group. And one of my direct questions was exactly what you're talking about. How can we make sure that we facilitate and have a good product and good consumer service for our employees? Actually, that is the reason why we're doing this now rather than doing this last year when we first had conversations. A group of us, superintendents all in Northern Kentucky, sat down and worked on this a little bit together. And we have many of our smaller districts here in Northern Kentucky that have already switched previously. We did not move through this process because we wanted to make sure we had enough time to plan appropriately, but also so that we can get all of their resources to help us onboard our employees on time.
Okay, that's great. Thanks for answering those questions. I appreciate that. Those were just concerns that I had after reading through all the information and the emails that I've received.
I just have one question and it was kind of based on the emails that I received. If an employee should choose to maintain their relationship with American Fidelity, does that substantially change the policy that they would have, whether it be the premiums or the services that they receive?
So, the, really the only impact to the employee would just be that it would no longer be a payroll deduction. So, they would continue that relationship with American Fidelity. And my assumption would be that American Fidelity would not raise the premiums, but I can't speak for them. So, that would be the impact to our employees directly.
Well, we don't know that they won't raise, because oftentimes what happens is if an employee remains on a plan that's no longer supported at the employer, then the premiums or the plan itself does in fact change a little bit. But we don't know if that's the case or not, or can they remain just on the same, I guess it's not payroll deducted, but the same, you don't know if it's going to be a different cost or terms?
Yeah, I couldn't speak for what American Fidelity, what the agreement would be afterwards. They can continue that relationship and we would support them in that communication. But I can't speak for American Fidelity on what their rates might be. Yeah, the, one of the things, sorry, as a rookie, Ms. Sishil has got my back here. One of the things that American Fidelity did mention repeatedly was their rate stability. So, that was one of the selling points that they had to us through this process. So, I would assume that that commitment is something that they would keep for individuals, whether they're part of our plan or whether they're part of an individual plan with them moving forward. But again, I can't speak for what American Fidelity's rates would be after our agreement.
Any more questions or further discussion?
Was it the recommendation of the committee to move to this other company?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, be that there's no further discussion. All in favor to move, thank you, to move forward with new business item C, the 125 Cafeteria Plan and Employee Optional Benefits Plan, vendor Houchens Insurance, please say aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion passes, all in favor. We will move to added agenda item IXD, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board approve the recommended action item D, the adjustment of the school calendar for Monday. And I will have a few comments, a little bit of information to share upon a motion.
I have a recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve the new business item D, the adjustment to the school calendar? Dr. Brown, do I have a second? Mr. Collins? Mr. Turner?
Thank you. Well, obviously, we know Super Bowl Sunday is this coming Sunday. The Bengals are playing in that game and an extremely exciting time for our entire Northern Kentucky, Greater Cincinnati area community. And just for the record, I'm a Bengals fan myself, and this is an extremely top, complicated topic, however. The district calendar is always a very, a very complex topic. There's any number of rules and guidelines that the district has to follow in putting a school calendar together. And that school calendar does dictate behavior in many ways of not only our students and our staff, but also our families and people in the community in which they plan around that calendar appropriately. So, that is one factor just to think about in our conversations if we wish to amend the calendar. We do have a date where the board, if they so chose, could move March 18th, which is a Friday. And on the school district calendar, that is a flexible PD day, essentially a placeholder for the flexible in-service for our certified employees that they have to complete each year. That is a day of work for some of our employees. It would be our 12-month employees and some of our staff support employees in some of our schools. But in general, it's not a day of school and that sits on March 18th right now. So, if the board so chose, they could make a decision to exchange or switch Monday, a day of school, to March 18th and move the day from March 18th, a flex professional development day for staff, to this coming Monday, Super Bowl Monday. Just providing a little bit more context, I do have some concerns, a couple of different types of concerns on this matter, just for the board to hear and to think about. One is, and actually Hen Yang, who just left, one of our students, he's on the Superintendent's Advisory Council and he was a fierce advocate during some discussions we had with the whole group last week. And I give him a lot of credit. He came with, with not only just a complaint or a desire, but he came with a solution. And he said, can we switch one of our days? Now, he was thinking about President's Day, the following Friday, or I'm sorry, the following Monday, which that could be done, but that would not be something I would recommend at all with that being President's Day and that being a national federal holiday. And knowing the ins and outs of honoring that day as a federal holiday for President's Day and also for some of the plans some of our families make on that holiday, as many of our families may not be working on that day depending on whether employed by the federal government or not, or other organizations that shut down on that day. One small, one small concern I think that I have for Monday and moving that is every day of school is a day where we feed a significant number of our students hot breakfast and a hot lunch that they may not have access to at home. And so, we want to make sure that if we do have a move, we work out some type of plans to assist with our community. And actually, Hen Yang mentioned something about that in his discussion here this evening. So, we would want to make sure that we do that to make sure that we take care of our kids that need us for a hot meal each day. I also do have a concern that over the years, we have seen attendance from our students take a slight dip in terms of Super Bowl Monday and we have seen the same with some of our employees as well. It's not been a major issue, but it has been a little bit of an issue at times. So, I think I could speak in my own, my own viewpoint and my own opinion that I think a day of instruction on March 18th may likely be better than a day of instruction on Monday because of all the fan interest, what we're a little bit hearing of, of some of the, you know, could our attendance for students be lower, could our attendance of employees been lower? I think it is something that we need to consider and really think about. So, I would recommend making the change from my own perspective as superintendent, but I know that is your decision as board members. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this topic? We already have the motion, right?
So, I know initially, when we started seeing districts in the, in the area begin to make, make plans to close school on Monday, this coming Monday, I was not in favor of it. Just in, in regard of the optics of it, the messages that are, that could potentially be sent to the children in the district regarding responsibilities and things of that nature. But having had some discussions with Mr. Turner regarding some of the variables that I didn't consider, especially those regarding the, the food insecurity for children in the district and certainly the quality of the instruction that could potentially be impacted if we went forward versus potentially switching out for a day that's not going to be impacted if we're looking at March 18th. If we're able to clear up, tie up some of the loose ends regarding making sure that the, the meals are served and, and there's, there's a consensus. I'm, my perspective on it has changed.
So, I'm going to also eat my hat here. You know, as a person that is constantly worried about who's going to show up to work, Super Bowl has consistently been a difficult day to get people to show up. But they're grownups and they probably stay up way later than children. I was also initially opposed, just because I thought it was, well, let me back up. I think I'm a bigger Bengals fan than Matt. And I don't mean just size-wise. They're, they're probably, Cameron and I go to a lot of Bengals games. We actually travel too and we watch them in different cities. So, you know, this is obviously, as the student said earlier, a historic thing. I do think though, however, your assessment is right, Mr. Turner, that, by the way, the Bengals will win the Super Bowl and the next day there will be parades and there will be things going on. And we will be absent a lot of students. And for that reason, I say, "Hooday." Let them, let them out of school.
Well, what's left of that hat you've eaten, pass it on down to me. Because I was the same mindset, because I was raised, it's a workday, you get up, you go to work. I was not in favor of this because I'm concerned about the precedents. I, I'm not sure that I have to worry about the Reds making the World Series anytime soon. But if they do and we get down to game seven, what are we going to do then? So, I just, because I don't follow the NFL. I'm not an NFL fan, but I am a Bengals fan mainly because they did something smart and they brought an SEC boy to be their, their quarterback. And I'm all, all SEC, so go, go Joe and go Bengals and I'll be cheering for you in my Bengals gear and my neon Nikes that are bright orange that I have to wear to work tomorrow because it's the lucky charm for, for, for the office. So, yeah, I wasn't thrilled about this and I do have a concern that, as Mr. Parks and Mr. Collins have said, that we make sure that we make provisions for our students for meals. And I'm all for the best instruction we can always provide and I think they're going to win too and I hope everyone is celebrating, but I will be at work. It's tax season.
I'll just echo that as well. I know I told my kids, I have to go to work, so do you, but now I still have to go to work and maybe they won't, so.
One final note, I think understanding the Bengals being a young team, our calendar committee probably has a few things to consider in putting together the calendar for next year. So, maybe we don't have to worry about this again next year. I think we might be able to find a spot for Super Bowl Monday. I don't know. But it's worth conversation for next year's calendar committee. Thank you.
Yes, who is on the calendar committee?
Yeah, I started to say.
It's Mr. Parks and myself, so I guess I make note of this.
I did, I did get an email that our founder was trying to help someone get rid of two Super Bowl tickets that someone had bought before their wedding was scheduled. And they said that if you want the tickets, something along the lines of go on to St. Michael's, it needed someone to stand in for them, for their Bengals tickets. And the punchline ended up being, go to St. Michael's Church, she'll be the one in the white dress. So, they're giving, they're skipping their wedding to go to the Bengals game, so.
Any further discussion? Seeing there's no further discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor of?
Of adjusting the district calendar to moving the day of school, day of instruction for our students from this coming Monday to Friday, March the 18th. And then moving the flexible PD day from March the 18th to this coming Monday.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Who did?
Any opposed? Everybody, it was unanimous, aye. Okay, moving on to agenda item X, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I'm going to call Dr. Detweiler, Deputy Superintendent for Learning Support Services, for an academic report.
Hooday. You all should have a folder in front of you that's marked middle school, high school, early release dates. I wanted to follow up on some of the professional learning planning as it relates to the approved 2223 calendar. As you look at that, I guess I want to emphasize what I've shared with you is not set in stone, nor is it necessarily something that LSS will direct the middle schools and high schools to do verbatim. I think it's important for the board and all of us to remember that professional learning for the staff is always tied to the school CSIP as well as our district C-DIP. I also wanted to leave room for schools to plan accordingly to their most recent data set, such as spring, spring data, PBIS data, case data, et cetera. So, what I tried to do, I guess the first sheet that you're looking at is I presented to you what would be a typical middle school and high school schedule for a typical six-period day as well as the block schedule and what that schedule would look like for the students adjusted for early release. And then if you continue on, what I tried to do is break out all of our stakeholders with within the schools and how they may utilize this time. And so I have their professional learning that would include whole school. And I tried to identify for you all, school improvement plans as well as district improvement plans, where you see parenthetically, I've tried to tie it towards the things we're working on. So you see SEL instructional training is listed there, trauma-informed care. Every school has a trauma-informed care team, but as you know, as we try and support more and more children, as we call the whole child as well, we're trying to increase trauma-informed care training for our staff. If you'll notice too, Dr. Watson and I have talked to you about MTSS and our advancements and priorities with RTI 2.0 that allows us to bring in the behavioral component, which is something we're also working on, so I wanted to call that out as well as within that MTSS. We're gonna have to work to really improve our instructional strategies for our students that are in tier one, in tier two, and so that is a prime opportunity for that. So I wanted to call that out, as you've heard more about that in previous board meetings and show that we're being driven by those district and school priorities. And then I've carried through for you all on school administration, core content PLCs, which I know in the initial passing of the calendar, there was a lot of talk of vertical alignment. I've added in some other aspects with, for example, high-yield instructional strategies, again, as that relates to MTSS. I've brought in special education teachers. And one of the other ones that this is a great opportunity for, a lot of our arts and humanities will experience professional learning in a silo within their school. This is gonna provide us a critical opportunity for middle school teachers to work with other middle school teachers within our arts and humanities and electives. It also can provide us an opportunity for vertical alignment, sixth, seventh, eighth to ninth, 10, 11, 12th grades. And, and that's a great opportunity that we haven't always had for our elective teachers. And then I've gone through to add in your counselors, instructional assistants, prayer professionals in the classroom, and office staff. I'm not gonna read all the way through, I just kinda wanted to give you guys a lens that it is guided by our district priorities and school priorities and emphasize there's some flexibility. There's two other sheets there that shows you that we can ensure that this is productive time. There are, are ways to enhance and kind of provide that independent professional learning in the PLC setting, so I gave two examples of that. And then the last page that I'll call attention to, as I know it's a great priority for all of us, is a more detailed early release plan as it relates to Jones Middle School. And Dr. Hickey did a nice job preparing that as it relates to both district and school initiatives. Okay, questions?
Just two quick questions, and Jenny might wanna pop in the first one. Wasn't there MTSS training? Did we, was that last week or the week before? How did that go?
It was Friday.
Was it good?
Got lots of resources, lots of materials and lots of new steps. So yeah.
Awesome.
Highly attended by our team and we're ready to do some, some work with the resources they provided.
Okay, great. And then another question on the, the cross-curricular. Doesn't NKCS have a program or training for cross-curricular between core subjects and arts and humanities type things? Cause I know my daughter participated in a class, oops, excuse me, where at Boone High School, the math and the music teacher collaborated together on lessons and the kids really enjoyed that by being able to look at math through music and stuff. It really engaged the kids.
The overture sheet, and that was something I was gonna add on to, is we will engage in some partnerships with any ABS on these days for our CTE and arts and humanities folks, for sure. They already know the date, the dates that were good.
And you'll see too, I called out core content, being able to have that same opportunity.
Good evening. So along the same lines, before we even get to that, I wanna mention something about the Bengals. So as if, again, if I were still principal, this would be something I would do, but you talk about a team that demonstrates some of the life skills that we want for our kids, what it feels like to be the underdog, resiliency, perseverance. These are life skills, so I would imagine as a school really doing some work around that, you know, again, pre-game and then as well as afterwards. So I'm just excited about that opportunity to teach real-life skills. Okay, so the elementary one-pager should be somewhere around where Mike's folder was. And this is, doesn't have everything attached to it. I did not give you the live links that are, I did include and I could email you some of these links for some protocols, but what we're looking at again is just bringing to life that idea of us becoming a learning organization and that PLC mindset. So I broke it down as if I were building principal and this, I meet with the principals on Tuesday for elementaries where we'll talk about this, but I was really looking at by content area. Elementary teachers teach most, if not all, core subjects. So if I would take a protocol for 60 minutes and I say I was assigned either reading, writing, or math, or science, or social studies, and now I'm in a vertical team, K through five of that subject area, there's a protocol where we're looking at our next upcoming unit of study and the team does a presentation to all of the, of their peers about what that unit's essential standards are, formative and summative assessments, and what is the shared picture of proficiency? And the protocol, after a 10-minute presentation, less than 10 minutes sometimes, requires the peers to give feedback, to give what we call warm and cool feedback and to basically address any gaps or holes or questions that they see. That would repeat, so if I'm a reading teacher, that's an hour that I might do that and then I might do, I might duplicate that process for math. I could also do that for science or social studies. So again, the principal will have some discretion on assigning teachers to different subject areas and following some protocols. We use Solution Tree a lot as our professional learning partner and they have many of these unit protocols. We're really studying with our leaders, what do strong tasks look like? What do kids need to be doing to ensure they're learning those standards to mastery as well as those 21st century skills? So this is an opportunity to really review as a vertical team, what are our kids being asked to do and what are those gaps? And again, like Dr. Pori spoke to on the back, we want an opportunity for our art teachers, music teachers, PE teachers, our friskies, our, our counselors to have time together that they crave that time and the fact that we could structure those, those throughout the district at different various locations is really amazing and something I know that they would want. So I just basically said that would be what those folks would be doing, again, in partnership with NKCS and some other regional partners that we are already talking to about those days. So that's just a sample elementary, again, more explicit. If schools would wanna deviate from this, then we would have to, in learning support, I would ask that we approve their PD plan ahead of time, but likely it's going to look something like this from a vertical alignment perspective. All right, any questions for elementary? All right, thank you.
Thank you both very much for that report. Now we have an operations report by Dr. Kim Best.
You keep giving me a promotion, Mr. Turner, not doctor yet, but so close.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I'll take it. If you'd like to send that down to Louisville and tell them you've just already finished that for me, I would love it.
Consider it done.
I'd love that. Just a follow-up to what they just talked about, about early release. I know there was some question about what lunch would look like on those early release days as well as transportation. So I have had some conversations with Ms. Caldwell, who's here as well, in food service and, you know, she has assured me that we could definitely make sure that we developed some feeding plans for those days. All students would still receive breakfast like they normally do. And then based on what that schedule looks like, it could either be a traditional hot lunch or it could be grab and go, or it could be all grab and go. So we've definitely got some plans in place to make sure that our students do, receive those two meals that they do at school. As far as transportation, it doesn't really impact greatly, it just changes the hours of transportation, but in conversation with Mr. Barracks as well, knowing those dates in advance would give them some planning time, it would just really make alterations to the driver's hours that day depending on what time the early releases take place. Addition to that, the weather events, I did wanna talk about that briefly, so as you're all aware, we had those wonderful days of weather. And I do have to say that our teams and facilities and maintenance, transportation, our custodians did a phenomenal job of making sure that all of our lots were up and ready to go when we returned to school. And just to kinda put that in perspective, we think of how difficult it may have been for some people who parked their cars in their driveway to remove that ice. So we have 250-plus vehicles in the district that had to be cleaned and ready to go for when we came back to school on Tuesday. And so all of those individuals really pulled together and worked tirelessly over Saturday and Sunday. So Mr. McCarter, myself, and Mr. Barracks and Mr. Razor were out and about Saturday and Sunday, just kinda looking at lots and our facilities and maintenance team and transportation really need to be commended for that work that they did as well as our building custodians. It was pretty phenomenal to see and they had to keep repeating that due to the weather, so great job to them. Construction update, as you've been around Boone County, you've probably seen the great work that's happening. Rise is moving right along. I'm super excited, so we're in the punch list phase here, so hopefully by the next board meeting, you might have the opportunity to venture upstairs and see what it looks like. So for those of you who had been up there previous to construction, you are going to be pleasantly surprised at how different that looks. This week, they did receive all their new furniture, so that has been a great thing to see that transformation and a big shout-out to Mr. Buffano. Their custodian here has been a key player in that, getting that transition as well as Mr. Mason from the warehouse. A lot of furniture moved out and a lot of new furniture came in, so that was a great thing to see for this building. Boone County High School, again, I actually did a walk-through there yesterday and it was really great to see some of the things that are going up in that auditorium. It's really coming together. So the acoustic panels went up earlier this week, so it's actually starting to look like an auditorium rather than just a big open space. Still experiencing material delays for cer- certain things through that, but they are looking at May, sometime in May, crossing our fingers, that we'll be able to tour that and have some ribbon-cutting ceremonies over there. So lots of great work happening at Boone County High School. As you know, we did approve in the consent agenda tonight, so phase two, so they will be starting with that preliminary work. We are, it will be with the same contractor that has phase one, so that we hope will be a very seamless transition to have that move forward. So super excited about that. If you're not familiar with that project, anybody who's familiar with Boone County High School, the freshman hallway, as everybody refers to it, so we're really excited to see what that looks like for our students at Boone County. And then last but not least to Jones, if you've been out to the Jones campus lately, it's kinda messy right now. They've done a lot of excavation, footers were poured earlier this week, so they're making some great progress out there, doing a lot of underground work with water lines, fire hydrant moves, but making some really good progress there as well. And last thing I have, reporting for Ms. Reutman, we do have our vaccination clinics will continue next week and there was some information that went out in email today. Those will take place at our high schools on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. So there's information out there on those times. Any questions?
Will those Monday, will those Monday dates be possible if we, if we displace?
That would be a good question, Ms. Reutman, since there's no school Monday.
Yes, and typically we've had some district staff help supervise with those events, so we should be able to make that work.
Great question.
I personally would like to commend the, all the staff for getting the parking lots and everything cleared off. I still have three to four inches ice on my driveway because my house faces the north, so the sun has not beat on it and melted it and I about slipped and slide this morning when I went out to walk the dog, so. The other thing, on the Boone County High School auditorium, is there any kind of projection date in May? Because I do know that they have awards night scheduled for May 16th.
That will, I feel confident that that probably will not happen.
Okay.
I would love to say it will, but I just feel confident it probably will not happen. It's a great question. Mr. Schlotman asked me the same thing. I'm like, I would love to say yes, but, and it'll be a great surprise if it does happen, so. At Rise, they're actually in the punch list phase, so down to the last kind of trim. The elevator is the last hurdle that we've had to, to kind of cross over, do some, some changes from the building inspector came in and decided they wanted some things to be done a little bit differently, so they've had to do some additional work with that, but they are in the trim phases, so it's, it's finally pulling together. It is not working for use yet. They had to redo some electrical, so not to get into the weeds too far, but when they came through for the inspection, they decided they wanted each of the sections of that to be wired separately, so they've had to go back in and change that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Best, and thank you especially for your work with Bob Barracks and Dan Razor over the weekend and the early hours that our transportation crews and maintenance crews worked, especially over this weekend. We've not had a storm with ice like that probably in the last 10 to 15 years and it was extremely, just significant. So they did a great job clearing all the lots, all the sidewalks and all the vehicles, the campus roads as well. And I do know our crews worked from 8:00 AM Sunday morning until 6:30 Sunday night, trying to get everything ready for Monday. And really, we did not even have the opportunity to get much done on Saturday because of how cold it was and, and trying to break through the ice. I also wanna thank our county road crews because they worked feverishly on Sunday as well to try to clear things and get things ready. And just, it was an extremely difficult decision making that Sunday evening for not having in-person school on Monday, but it is all around student safety and safely transporting our kids. We have lots of areas where it was just not, we were just not able to safely guarantee our kids can be safe in getting into the schools and getting away from their homes. We do have many areas in some rural parts of our county where our buses don't have room to turn around, especially if it's in snowy and icy conditions, so they don't, they don't have the opportunity to be able to move their bus and, and turn around. They have to back their bus out of that road, all the way to the end of that road until they get to the main street or whatever their street may be connecting, which is an extremely dangerous thing to do and extremely just treacherous and then just difficult to do. Our bus drivers do it at, at times when it's absolutely necessary, but those are challenging situations. So I just wanted to comment to the board that it was extremely difficult for that Monday of school and our, and our employees just performed amazingly trying to get things ready to go for Monday, which really allowed us to be able to go Tuesday without any problem. I would also like to thank one other group of people here before I just give my last message here, and that's our school nurses and our clinicians. They've also done just a, a yeoman's job in our schools every day, helping to keep our kids safe, working with students that were sick or ill, doing whatever's necessary during a very difficult time here with this last month and a half with this little surge of Omicron cases. I shouldn't say little surge of Omicron cases, but we, the, the Omicron cases that we were dealing with in our community and our schools. So really appreciate the, the work of our school nurses and our clinicians. Two more things for me, we have three more dates set for our portrait design team and developing core student competencies in our new strategic plan and working with Dr. Fuji, the Senior Director of Batel for Kids. We've got one meeting down successfully completed with over 100 in attendance for our portrait design team. Each of those meetings has a purpose. Meeting number two coming up here on Thursday, February 24th. That purpose is developing competencies to better prepare our students. The third meeting, which is on March 15th, is creating local context for competency considerations. And the last meeting, Tuesday, April 19th, is unveiling the portrait of a graduate and developing commitment and will also be developing the district's strategic plan during those last two meetings as well. And also just one general reminder for our school board members here, we do have the Kentucky School Board Conference on February 25th through February 27th in Louisville and we also will be presenting a session on the Ignite Institute during that event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We'll now move to-
We'll now move to Agenda Item XI, Proposals and Communications. Do we have any board member committee reports from the last meeting of the committees?
Julie, I can do a brief one for mine. I know almost Dr. Best talked about work with, work with the Transportation Committee. So I know most of our community received the kind of worst-case scenario route cancellations that came from that committee work, the Climate and Culture Survey, and then some updates to the Transportation Handbook, not with regards to policies, but with regards to graphics that are difficult to read, just to make it more visually appealing, and I think a better user-friendly experience. I also, this month in the Teaching and Learning Committee, we got to get a little bit of a look with regards to the Portrait of a Graduate work and update. We got some information on our MTS, which kind of dovetails into what we talked about this evening. We also got to look at some of our English language learners and some of the numbers. I think I'll share with the board something that fascinated me, just with regards to the numbers of English language learners, maybe. Maybe I'll share that, I don't know, I have too many papers. The growth in that particular population of students and how we address that is something that we discussed, and then I think that was it for that one. And then the COVID Committee met earlier this week. They've been meeting frequently, and they came forth with the recommendation that community rates were such that we should move to our recommended masking. And the committee had been headed towards that assertion before the Omicron surge, and then the transition had kind of occurred to switch to trying to maintain in-person instruction, and maintaining as many staff and faculty as we could. And so that work came out of that COVID Committee on Monday, and I think that's it for my COVID committees. I do, I did find my numbers, they said that we are up to our current LEP population, which are our English language learners, are over 1,600 students. So that is a great deal of students, and they had 20 that were pending just on that day. So we have some pretty significant growth with regards to our ELL population.
And I believe those are the ones that are still receiving services, doesn't include those that have graduated from.
Yep.
Kind of graduate from receiving services.
The entire population is in excess of 2,000 students.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are my committee updates.
Any other?
No, budget hasn't met. The walk hasn't met.
Okay. I think the only thing I would dovetail on the Teaching and Learning was the, some of the work that Jim had talked about with, is it Next Gen, or the, what we're participating in the cohort for the next generation? And then we had our, what came out of the Benefits Committee was earlier discussion, earlier item. Any other announcements? Because I have my list as I always do, so. I had attended the Superintendent Student Advisory Council meeting last Thursday? Wednesday? Wednesday. Wednesday morning, we had great discussions, they had lots and lots of questions, they were very engaged, I really appreciated it. My message to them was, make sure you use your student voice and have a seat at the table, and making sure, and I mentioned to Elena earlier tonight, that at the Portrait of Graduate Work, we have a number of students invited. If they can't attend, they need to let their principal know, so that another student can attend in their place, so the students have a seat at the table. Elena, you did a fantastic job wrapping us up at the last one with your authentic student voice, and we really appreciate that. You made an impact on the community. Reminder, Ed Camp Kentucky is the first weekend of March, and you have the teachers, that's a great time to get some PD. The Portrait of Graduate Work. The 2022 Maker Expo date has been set for April 30th out of IGNITE. That's going to be a huge community event. Beth and her interns and crews out there is, it's going to be an incredible event, so it's, I'm going to call it the World Maker Expo, or the Maker Expo on steroids. There's going to be an artisan market, there's going to be a Lego competition, a sidewalk chalk competition, I mean, just, it's going to be a really fun, large community event out there that day. The Portrait Committee is going to be having a groundswell initiative out at IGNITE, I think it's June 17th and 18th, where the entire community public are invited to attend that. And in conjunction with thanking our school nurses, this is School Counselors Week, and we owe a lot to our school counselors, because they are really supporting not only our students, but our staff during this time, and the work that they do is very, very important. Anything else? No? We will move to Agenda Item XII, but we have no closed session, so we'll move to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
So Mrs. Byrd and Dr. Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? So motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, now I gotta find my finance.
Okay, we call to order the Finance Corporation Boone County Board of Education, February 10th, 2022 meeting. All presidents are, all board members are present. We will move to the Audience Assistance. Any Audience Assistance? Seeing none, we will move to Item IV, Approval Minutes and Financial Statements. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action item three, the resolution to adopt a resolution authorizing, 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 excuse me, the insurance of revenue bonds with the resolution to be placed in the minutes as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the action item resolution to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds with the resolution to be placed in the minutes as recommended? Dr. Brown, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Byrd, is there any discussion?
I just need you to read that again.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Could you explain that, please?
Okay, seeing that there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, the motion passes. Move to Item IV, Approval of Minutes and Financial Statements.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I recommend the board to approve the Corporation Meeting Minutes of January 13th, 2022, and the financial statements as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the January 13th, 2022 Corporation Meeting Minutes and Financial Statements as recommended? Mr. Collins, second?
Second.
Second, Dr. Brown. Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll move forward with a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, no opposed, motion passes, all in favor. We will now move to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No.
Dr. Brown, do I have a second? Mr. Parks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, all in favor. And good.
But you did have a discussion.
Oh, sorry, discussion on which one?